I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, June 7th, 2023. Who's in back today?
It's me.
Sherry, very good. Sherry, would you call roll, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Starkweather.
Here.
Terrific. Okay, next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Murphy, if you'd lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do you have any suggested changes to the agenda, Lucas?
I do not.
Okay, very good. Anyone else want to change the agenda in any way? Great, we'll move on then. Public communications is the time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the commission on items of city business or their own interest that are not on the current agenda. I have no speaker cards. Is there anyone here present who wishes to speak on something other than the agenda items? Okay, Sherry, do we have anyone in the waiting room with a hand raised?
No, we do not.
Very good, then we'll move on to disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. I don't believe, oh, we do have a site, yes, okay. I'm familiar with the site and have had no ex parte contacts.
No ex parte contacts.
Same, same here.
Same, familiar with the site, no ex parte contacts.
Same.
Very good. All right, then we'll move on to our first item, a public hearing item, a proposed text amendment regarding ADUs. Alex, take us away.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Item one for tonight is a proposed text amendment to the Ojai Municipal Code, Section 10-21709, which covers the city's ordinance on building, regulating, and applying for accessory dwelling units. The amendments tonight are in response to three separate state legislative bills which have become effective in the past two years. Assembly Bill Number 2221 and Senate Bill Number 897 became effective January 1st, 2023, and aim to revise the development standards and methods of processing ADU and JADU applications. Assembly Bill Number 3182 became effective January 1st, 2021, and requires local agencies to act on any application to create a JADU or ADU within 60 days from the date the agency receives a completed application. Most importantly, though, pursuant to Section 65852.2, letter G, of the Government Civil Code, these new state laws do not limit the authority of local agencies to adopt less restrictive requirements for the creation of an ADU. So what exactly does that mean? That means that standards that are set at the local level, for example, maximum height or lot coverage, can take precedence if they are less stringent than standards set at the state level.
That's opposite of the way the state law usually reads, isn't it?
I would concur, yes.
Okay.
And this is particularly important for our city because the current ordinance has several standards. Our current ordinance, again, has several standards that are already less restrictive than state laws, and thus do not need or require amending. Thus, what staff is recommending tonight are amendments that deal with specifically maximum height regulations, clarification on JADU requirements, and timeframes for processing applications. So the purpose of these amendments is not to change the fabric of the current ordinance, it's to come into compliance with recently passed state regulations. So that's the end of the brief, and happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Questions for staff? Jamie, go ahead.
And this is a broad question to staff. Do we have any TICs here, tenant in common, forms of ownership, or forms of occupancy, or forms of development, as opposed to condominiums? Are all of our dwellings owned using the condominium model, as opposed to the TIC model, which is more like a co-op model, I believe?
So you're talking about whether or not it's a condo or a tract whereby one is, both of them are under a HOA, one has common ownership, and one then is just managed? Is that what you're talking about, in terms of the difference between the two?
No, I believe so.
Because if so, then yes, we have apartments that are then rented, and then apartment units, there's a couple different options, and then there's ones where there is individually owned, subdivided, but then managed through an HOA. So yes, we have both.
Well, it's not the management as much as, in a TIC, I believe you own shares in the entity which owns all the property.
So a timeshare, is that what you're talking about?
And then you own a right to the unit, not timeshare, but I don't, you know, timeshare is an independent variable. But it's slightly easier to convert something into a TIC than it is a condominium, a multifamily dwelling, or it can be, based upon, San Francisco is, TICs are very popular in San Francisco, they've just begun in Los Angeles, and I was just wondering if we...
Yeah, not aware of any TICs in...
I'm sure that's why they call this in common as opposed to condominium, because it's meant to sort of drape over all of those forms of ownership. This 25% issue, we don't get to weigh in on that, do we? That's a, that looks like a hard and fast state provision, that even though you may question it, it's been already sort of decided. I won't comment until later on some of the other provisions where we're proposing changes, which we don't have to do. The 16 versus 18-foot height of the seat of the outside of the building.
Wait, just to clarify, you said the 16 versus 18, and your statement is that we don't have to do that? Isn't the 16 versus 18 a state requirement?
That's a state statute, yeah.
Yes, so that, so it's a yes, that we do have to do that, yes.
We have to do the 18.
Yes, that's in the ordinance.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note that each of these...
No, it's in this proposed ordinance, but doesn't this proposed ordinance have some elements that are us keeping?
Oh, I see the question.
That we already have decided, the town's already decided.
Correct. So in the, so the only particular example when we are changing 16 to 18 feet is in the definition for multifamily accessory dwelling units, that in our current ordinance, say the maximum height needs to be 16 feet, whereas on, in state law, it has to be 18 feet. But when you go to the table chart for development standards for residential zones...
Right.
Which is what the code for 1709 refers back to, when it talks about development standards for an ADU, all of those height standards are actually already less restrictive than state law. But it's only in that particular case in 1709, or, yeah, in 1709, where it's describing multifamily accessory dwelling units, where it talks about a maximum height of 16 feet. So that's actually the only instance that we're changing that.
The chart seems to refer to the zoning district.
Correct.
For all those.
That's what I mean, correct. But the one instance where we're changing it to 18 feet is actually underneath that table, where in our code right now, it says the maximum is 16 feet. Yeah.
So when they use the term, we can be looser, or whatever the term is, that means we could allow a higher height, we wanted to, or we could, you know, make a bigger dwelling unit, or those kinds of things, but we can't be more restrictive?
Correct, correct. And you'll notice in the development standards right now for residential zones, they're typically 20 to 25 feet for a maximum height for structures. So that's why there's no need for us to adjust, that's why we're not proposing any amendments to that part of the code.
Let me see if I've got this right. If I want to build a dwelling with an 18-foot height, with or without a JADU as part of that, it is permitted?
Yes.
If I want to build one that's 16 feet, it is also permitted?
Yes. We don't have a, we don't have a minimum height, we just, we have maximum heights.
Oh, okay, right, okay. And then finally, are there any provisions in the law which says that if somebody sells a dwelling which has a JADU attached to it, and there is a renter in the JADU, and the new buyer of it wants to kick the renter out, is there any, are there any provisions about how that's done, or the permissibility of that?
There is nothing within our current code that addresses that specifically.
Nor in the changes to the state law recently with ADU law, so via the normal unlawful detainer process.
And our rent protection bill and our tenant protection doesn't apply since it's a single-family unit.
Rent stabilization.
Stabilization, sorry, rent stabilization, tenant protection only, doesn't apply to single-family units, so it would never apply to any of these, unless the state law changes. There was some proposals, but it hadn't made it through.
I'm sure. Is it, and finally, is there a, any, I'll drop that point, it's, it's a, I'm sure, a dead horse, so, thank you.
Any questions, John?
Yeah, just a couple things. So, this isn't really a question, just more of a thing to point out. So I know there's been a lot of talk about not building any homes in Ojai, but you highlighted it here, that there's been 138 applications within the past five years for ADUs. So we have built some stuff, just not necessarily single-family homes.
Some subset of that is probably new builds.
Correct.
But the conversions don't make any difference in the housing stock, yeah.
And that information as well, for the public's contacts, is available through our citizen portal of Acela, if anyone is interested in finding that information. You have to do some data mining, but it is available for citizens if they do want to see that research as well.
Perfect. Just to correct your point, Chair Quilisi, ADUs, compliance units, and junior ADUs, all three of those count towards our housing stock.
Oh, they count against the RENA numbers.
Correct.
I'm talking about the actual housing stock, that's all.
Well, if I can, it's the capacity to take an additional family into a, under one roof or under two roofs on one property.
Mm-hmm.
So...
It should count.
It should count. Well, that's, I'm sorry, we should talk about that later.
That sounds like deliberation.
All right, I'm sorry, I have a second question. This is on Exhibit A, Attachment A, accessory dwelling unit, you have a subset A where it says an efficiency unit, C efficiency unit. I was trying to find that, I couldn't find it. And then secondly, B, a manufactured home, C manufactured home. I was just curious where those references are.
Those should be in Section 10-23602, which is the definitions for, which defines all of these terms in the...
Okay, but they're not listed here, is what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, and it says an accessory dwelling unit includes the following, an efficiency unit, see that, and it includes a manufactured home?
Sorry, say that question again, sorry.
In the sentence before those, it lists those two bullets.
Page two of Exhibit A.
Yeah, same page, yeah, yeah. The last sentence, an ADU must have exterior access independent from the primary unit and/or interior access independent from the primary unit, an accessory dwelling unit includes the following, A, an efficiency unit, C efficiency unit, B, a manufactured home, C manufactured home. So what are we saying, that it has to be classified as a manufactured home?
Or should the word "may" be in there and say the unit may include, as opposed to includes?
Okay.
Yeah, I believe that's, yeah, I believe that's probably a typo.
I actually, I think it's per state, I mean, that's pulled from state law.
State law?
Correct.
Bad drafting.
Bad state law.
Sorry.
One more.
Yeah, I can assure everyone that I did not take any liberties in adding any of these today, yeah.
Any questions?
I have one last question.
Excuse me. On page 10 of 15, this is under junior accessory dwelling units, it states here, "The owner must reside in the single-family residence, but may choose to reside within the remaining portion," I guess that would be the junior portion, rent out the bigger portion. What happens if they sell it? Or, I mean, you can't rent those, basically, it sounds like, if the owner has to live in the, in the unit, you can't rent that house, unless that doesn't literally mean that.
So the junior ADU, if you're going to create a junior ADU, it does require deed restriction, the deed restriction requires that resident to live within the main junior ADU or the ADU. They cannot rent all three.
No, what I'm, it uses the word owner here, though. There's a difference between a resident and an owner.
Yeah, the owner of the property, so...
The owner has to be living on the property, he can't rent it to someone else.
Owner becomes the resident, exactly. You can't be an owner in Malibu renting all three, you can't be an owner in DC renting all three.
And does that rule apply to all the rest of the...
Only for junior ADUs.
Only for junior ADUs?
Correct.
Okay. And there's a statement in here about, oh, on page nine of 15, there's a reference in 10-something A, 10A, I guess, "requirements contained in the second unit guidelines." Are these something that we have here, or is this a separate set of guidelines somewhere? See, it's made reference to second unit...
Which reference are you calling out?
Requirements contained in second unit guidelines.
Last sentence.
Where are they?
Yeah, I am almost for certain that those second unit guidelines are HCD's guidelines that they've provided.
Oh, so they have second unit guidelines, but we don't have them. Are they referenced? Well, this is our code, we don't have any specific reference to them.
Again, we're referencing state guidelines, and those state guidelines then reference, what's identified here as second unit guidelines, and those second unit guidelines were developed, I want to say, in 2016, and have been refined and revised since that date. That's really when the major ADU regulations came in into play.
So shouldn't we have those specifically referenced as to what the source is, so if someone wanted to look them up, they would know where to go?
We could, if...
Seems like it makes sense.
If the commission wants to be as specific as possible, I think that would make sense.
Because my looking at it, I thought, okay, where are they?
Let's make a note of that for deliberations.
Sure.
That's a good idea.
And let's think, are there any other questions? So are tiny homes, this is another question, movable tiny homes, are they, are our regulations governed by state regulations for movable tiny homes, or are these ones we just created ourselves?
These are created independently, yeah, then there's no changes to those regulations as well.
And why do we, why do they have to sit behind the house?
The junior, the tiny home?
Says, "It's situated behind the principal residential dwelling unit between the applicable set, rear setback line and the principal residential dwelling unit." Why do we require that? And what does that mean?
That was a requirement when it went forward for council, yeah.
People don't want to see them, I guess, when they drive by?
Out of sight, out of mind, I suppose.
It's the language that a city council approved.
Okay, I just wondered what the reason was, if you recall, or...
Yeah.
It just seemed a little restrictive to me, but anyway. Okay, and finally, are there a lot of places in this code where we've been lucid in the state? Is there a whole bunch of them, or just a couple of them?
In terms of ADUs?
Yeah.
Just make sure we're focused on...
We can be, you know, give more discretion to...
I would say for the most part, we're in line with the state regulations, and for the most part, because those state regulations have become very loose in their requirements for ADUs. Twenty years ago, that was not the case. In 2016, leaning into 2017, those regulations changed drastically.
So we don't need to get a copy of those so we could see which ones we've added on to, to make looser or not?
Over the years?
No, I mean, just so that we could, like Red Line, or Yellow Line, or something, so we saw which provisions we've gone beyond the state to allow them more liberally, I guess you might say.
Yeah, not in this case, because we're looking at some pretty, I would say, minor...
Oh, I know you're not changing it, but I mean, at some point, can we see what they are, so we have an idea of which ones we've gone beyond the state?
Good project for you.
That sounds like a pet project, yeah.
Yeah, but I can't do it, because I don't have to...
Lucas, if I may, you, Lucas, if I may...
65852.
Exactly.
I guess I could read all the statutes.
Exactly, yeah, those are available for anyone at any time for public consumption on the internet.
There could be like 10 statutes that govern all this, you know?
I think HCD does a pretty good job, Housing and Community Development does a pretty good job on their website of providing, one, the guidelines, and then, two, what those standards look like, and they do it in about a 15 to 20-page guideline kind of overview, versus reading the specific statutes within government.
So we haven't, have we ever gone through an exercise to look whether people want us to be more liberal and...
I think more importantly, I don't believe councils identified, hey, commission, can you look at this more? What we're doing here at this meeting tonight, and then obviously this will be recommended to city council, is compliance and consistency with current state law.
Which I would just note, you know, if the city doesn't decide to, if the planning commission doesn't decide to recommend this to city council, you know, these are still requirements that the city has to follow.
Yeah, we have no choice, I realize that.
Right, so it's a little bit confusing for applicants, and, you know, city staff, and yourselves, what enforcing these rules, and all other rules, if, you know, if something comes up with the commission, and, you know, you're asked, hey, but it says, you know, say 16 feet in the city code, but you're telling us this isn't correct? Why? You know, that's not, and that's not just with ADUs, or with anything, that's frequently with housing law as it changes here.
Yeah, it creates a conversation and time with staff that doesn't really need to be spent. If we're creating consistently with state, consistency with state law, then it creates a more efficient path forward for those applicants.
So is the tiny home the only section of our ADU code that is completely locally devised? Are there other sections?
That is, that is correct. That is the only section that's locally devised and created wholly. I mean, it's pretty unique, there's not a lot of communities that are doing it right now.
And it says it's on a trial basis or something like that?
Correct, we're taking back, well, we're required, CDD is required to take back to council an update of what we've done with tiny homes after the last two years. It's a pilot program.
And pilot for how many years?
For 10 years or something like that.
I don't think it's two, I think it's more than that, I think it's something like not more than 10.
For how many years is the pilot?
Within a two-year span.
How long was the pilot supposed to go?
Two, two years.
So how far are we into it?
We're, we have to reevaluate at the end of this year.
End of this year, okay, okay.
And we have one so far?
We do have one, and we've had several applications that have been submitted, and we have another application in currently. Unfortunately, those other applications were withdrawn.
But we have one that's, is going forward.
We have one, yes, we have an example.
But we don't see them, you just do that mysteriously.
Correct.
And they're in the backyard.
And it's a, it is a process, I mean, it's a mysterious process, but it requires a lot of checks and balances, for sure.
A lot of nuance with those.
That's fine, yeah.
I just have a couple. You mentioned three aspects, being more permissive in regulations, and I can't remember the second one right now, but the third one was the application timeframe. I see that on, in Exhibit A, page four, nearly at the bottom, the applications paragraph, it parrots, as it should, the language from AB 2221, I think it is, yeah, saying that we have to act on the application within 60 days from the date the local agency receives a completed application. Great. The staff report, though, page two, under longer application timeframe, talks about notices to an applicant prior to, or whether or not, the application is complete for processing. I don't see anything in state law about that. The second part, having to act on the application to create an ADU or a JADU within 60 days from the date the local agency receives a completed application, is what you have done over in Exhibit A, page four. But the staff report says this gives staff an additional 30 days to properly vet and process applications, and I don't understand that, because the state law and the change that you've put in on page four of Exhibit A talks about what to do after the city receives a completed application. So what happens before the city receives a completed application?
So...
There's a provision here now that you have 30 days to say, is it complete, is there more needed, whatever, and that's fine, but I don't see anything about that in the state law, and I scanned 2221, can't find it.
Right, so the 30 days is Ojai Municipal Code, is, that's an ordinance that we have.
For a status report.
For a status report, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's local.
But the 60 days called out in the next paragraph, and in the change to the ordinance, has to do with after receipt of a completed application, not before. So we still don't have anything in 10-21709 about a timeline for before receipt of a completed application. 10-21807 talks about it, but that's not part of the subject that we're dealing with tonight, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And, and the time that it takes to properly vet and process applications is not dealt with in 2221, right? Okay. Last thing.
Chair, if I can give the context for that, right?
Yeah.
So right now, the planning division has 30 days to respond to an applicant for any sort of discretionary permit, whether that's a conditional use permit, et cetera, et cetera. So me, the context of me adding that into, or amending our code to add that language was to allow staff an extra 30 days to act on application specific to an ADU or a JADU. So that's the intent of putting that in there. So however we can do that correctly is the intent of that ad.
That ad is consistent with state law, and I would just state this, I can imagine some of the reasons why that state law was amended, given some other cities that are out there. We are not within the crosshairs of that standard. If I was to look back at the processing and procedures that we take ADUs through, it is far less than the days and the time that you're seeing here. I think that's really meant for other communities, not for this community, from a processing standpoint. Be as it may, we're looking for consistency with state law at this point, so, it's nothing more, nothing less than that.
And this does that.
This does that, correct.
The state law is mute on the timeframe prior to receiving a completed application.
Correct.
From what I can tell.
Yeah.
Okay. Last thing, and this, it's almost silly here, it took a long time to get a recommendation from the planning commission, I guess it was, to the city council, to a change in the code that defines short-term rentals as... as more than thirty days. Or, I'm sorry, define short-term rentals as less than thirty days except for the month of February. But twenty-two, twenty-one defines short-term rental. Says a local agency may require the ADU be used for rentals of terms longer than thirty days. We're not doing that from what I can see in the changes here, correct? We're not requiring ADU rentals to be longer than thirty days.
The units themselves, so if, for instance, if someone's trying to do an SDR for an ADU, it still requires the thirty days, a thirty-day minimum rental.
Just like any rental.
Just like any other unit, correct?
So that was, you couldn't have a, make your ADU into a short-term rental space in your house?
You can't make anything into a short-term rental.
Yeah, but that's, that's what that thirty days applies to.
Okay, cool. Any other questions?
I, yeah, I do. I'm sorry, this one's really small, but Exhibit A, Attachment A, page five of fifteen.
The table.
The table, yeah. On the very bottom, maximum floor area, you have struck out existing habitable area of legal. I was just wondering why that is, because if you look over to the the to the left and over to the right, those two items include the same language. So you have it crossed out in two, but not on the whole row, just in those columns.
So the the context of that was that the the state, the state code does not have identifiers for, doesn't have disclaimers as we do in this code where it says existing habitable area. It just says the full area. So that, I can take that back, sir, and make sure if that's, because it might be, it might be pertaining to attached ADUs versus other types of ADUs, because when you're looking at those columns there, they are disclaimers for the types of ADUs attached or detached. So I I think that, I I believe that's why, but I noticing that, your correction, I can, I can double check that and make sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's again minor, but I was just just curious. Thank you.
Well, I think it's important to note that we're not looking to to change anything that isn't per state law currently, right?
But state law does require deletion of those phrases in these two columns, but does not require deletion of those phrase, of that phrase in the other columns?
Correct.
Oh, okay, all right. Then that, there you go. That's that's the answer.
Yes, but I'm, you know, but I'm happy to to go back and.
You don't know why state did it, but you're just following state law. That's totally fine.
Well, to be, well, again, the state, state law does not say strike out that language. State law just does not have any disclaimers for for using that measurement. Whereas we do in the code, so I wanted to make sure that was fully compliant.
Okay, I got you. I got you.
Excellent. Thank you for that detailed work.
Yeah, thank you.
One other question. You have under, on page six of fifteen, the parking requirements. Parking within, for units within one-half mile of a transit stop. Do we have a transit stop or not? We can, does that consider a?
The state language, I researched this, it says a major transit stop.
But ours doesn't say that.
I don't know if scat bus qualifies as major.
The trolley does not qualify.
Qualified trolley, no, trolley does not.
But we do have one that, a bus that goes to.
We do have a bus. We do have a bus that goes through.
So that's what you're referring to, within a half mile of that?
Gold, Gold Coast Transit.
Well, that's what it is now, Gold Coast Transit.
Stops two or three places within the city.
Yeah.
But a major transit stop is also defined by the frequency of transit. And I would, I would recommend that we put major transit stop in there because that's what's in the state law.
But we can go beyond the state law because the state law, you're right, that's, there's state laws that had to do with what.
I would say we're we're two separate issues, one, compliance with state law, then, you know, potentially going beyond state law. State law is kind of confusing on this issue, not in terminology. I agree, it does say major transit stop, and then it says as defined by, and then it references the code section where it refers to a transit stop.
Which goes on to a couple of other.
Right, and then the final definition is transit stop, not major transit stop. But I think that's a a good suggestion to refer to as a major transit stop, because that'll that'll clarify what's what's going on here.
Because we don't have any.
Well, we can define a transit stop whatever we want, for, because we can go, we can go beyond the state because that's, those are tied to like certain provisions requiring affordable housing issues.
Yeah, I just want to be careful with the statement, whatever we want, because there's within, within the parameters of state law, so there's certainly a ceiling and to a certain degree, a floor.
I prefer to leave it that way, personally.
Well, the question is, does, does leaving out the word major, does that make us more permissive or less permissive?
More permissive, because then you can have places that don't need a parking space.
I I would, I would agree with that because the, as as mentioned before, they define major transit stop by the by the frequency of the stops. And right now, according to that definition, we don't have a major transit stop, so theoretically, yes, I, you know, I would say.
So this is another instance of us being more permissive?
Yes, in in that regard, so.
Then I withdraw my suggestion. Any more questions for staff to clarify this amendment? All right, let's, let's move to public comment. We'll open the public hearing for public comment. I have one speaker card, Larry Steingold.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Larry Steingold, I just have questions. I, we don't have an ADU. I have no intention of building one on my property. How many ADUs can go on a property? Junior ADUs, tiny homes, turn the garage into a, how many? Three, four, five, ten?
So one ADU can go on a property, one junior ADU can go on a property. However, if you want to do a, a, a tiny home, the ADU could not go on the property then. It would be one or the other.
Okay, no matter how big the, how big the lot is, the.
Size of lot doesn't matter.
All right. In the document, I, the law that you're passing, whatever you're discussing, it talks about multifamily ADU. Multifamily apartment house in like, right, is a three fam, three-decker, you know, three kitchens, three bed, you know, all that sort of thing. Multifamily ADU, is that two kitchens, two distinct tenants in an ADU? Like twenty-four-story or an eighteen-story ADU, floors, tenant up, tenant down, two separate?
I think it mentions two units. It doesn't say it's per per each multifamily area.
Yeah, because multifamily means two families, two tenants, theoretically, maybe one nuclear family, but to me, it's two tenants.
Yeah, I would turn to what the definition says specifically.
What is it?
I, I think they're talking about the the whole, considering the primary location, the primary residence, the ADU and potentially junior ADU, that counts as a multifamily.
Okay, but the way I was reading it, was that a, you take an ADU, you want to take it to eighteen feet? You want to have twelve hundred feet, that's six hundred a floor, that's two kitchens?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just curious.
But that's if you had two ADUs and you can only.
Or one ADU with two floors. Anyway, and also, does the state, when you're talking about having to be completed in sixty days, does the state law specifically say that the application has to be complete? Or it has to be, the application has to be made?
The app, it, it states that it has to be acted on.
Right, so an incomplete application can be acted on?
Correct. Us, us updating the applicant that their application is incomplete would be considered acted on, yes.
Okay, but if it's, like, let's assume you get inundated with thirty, forty of these things, and you're only one person or two people, and it doesn't get acted on, a half-completed application can get approved automatically?
Correct.
Do you have enough people to deal with what you have to deal with?
That is a question for me, yes. ADUs, because of the way in which they've been streamlined, ADUs, junior ADUs, and compliance program, all those have a very streamlined approach. We know exactly what we're looking for. We've seen them time and time again. There's really no uniqueness to them beyond what we've already seen. So we've seen the same ones over and over again, whether attached, a conversion, or new construction on their own. It's, or even above, right? So, sorry, we're doing back and forth here.
Thank you.
So it's, there's typically, I just want to finish the thought here.
Sure.
In terms of of having the the appropriate staff to address ADUs, absolutely. We're seeing maybe twenty-five a year, and that's the combination, on average. That's a combination of ADUs either as as a freestanding or as a conversion. That includes compliance and that includes junior ADUs. And tiny homes, let's not forget tiny homes, it's all within the family.
One last little question regarding the arbolata and the fact that the septic systems are all failing. To approve an ADU that has to connect, does that get in the way of connecting?
Capacity charges can't be accounted for.
Because they're already stuff, not charges, I'm talking about not like.
Capacity can't even be the the reason. That's the other thing, it's.
The arbolata is not, Ojai anyway.
Sanitary district does not, does not do a capacity charge on an ADU.
No, I'm not talking about money. I'm talking about, the septic system is like, dead. I mean, you can, you guys force them to like, hey, we gotta get the septic system upgraded or do something.
No, that's, that's not something that we have within the provisions. Also, it's not something that the state has identified as something that's necessary. Now.
Not, not just necessary, within the city's authority.
Within the city's authority. It was, just to, just to, just to fair clarification, in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, that didn't exist. There was capacity charges, there was studies that were, that were required, that typically cities would require. That's been taken off the table.
Well, it's, it's not completely off the table. The way the state law runs right now, if it is a newly constructed detached ADU with a sewer connection, there is a capacity charge.
Separate sewer connection, right?
Well.
Separate ladder.
Matter where it ties into the system, if it's a separate load on the system with a newly constructed ADU, then a capacity charge is involved. If it is a conversion, or if it is a conversion of an existing space, or if it's legalization of an existing space, that's an, that's an ADU that is not a new construction ADU, and no capacity charge is involved.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's the rules that the sanitary district operates by.
Thank you.
But back, back to one other point that was made here about incomplete applications and such. State law appears to be mute on incomplete applications. The sixty-day time limit is for acting on a completed application.
Mr. Steingold asked about the multifamily. My reading of this.
I don't see it.
What, multifamily?
I don't, I don't see multifamily ADUs.
Ah, yes, it's on page ten of fifteen and eleven of fifteen. So it has two types. One is within the mult, in the multifamily. We don't, doesn't say how many units would be in the multifamily. It's like apartment complex. And you could increase it by twenty-five percent within the physical building by filling up.
Build multiple attached accessory dwelling units up to twenty-five percent of the number of existing multifamily dwelling units.
But only within, only existing structures?
That is.
See, they're talking about
Attached.
Storage rooms, boiler rooms, passage, attic. Yeah, those things, like an attic and things like that. The other one, number two, is where you are adding up to two detached accessory dwelling units to a multifamily unit, and that could be two stories, I guess. And that's the, and that could go up to.
Doesn't say one way or the other.
Well, it could go up to eighteen feet. It'd be hard to be two stories at eighteen feet, I guess.
Would be.
Very short stories. Anyway, you could add two.
But that's, that's detached ADU.
Two, you could add two detached.
Two detached ADUs.
To a, to a multifamily complex, if they're spaced or something, yeah, okay. So that's, that's the reference to those two things, the way I read it. Is that correct?
This okay? We're still reading this correctly?
Did I read it correctly?
That makes sense, yeah.
Thank you for all that. Is there anyone else here present or Sheri in the waiting room with hand raised who wishes to speak on this item?
No, there is not.
And I see no hands raised in the room. Then we will close the public comment portion of this public hearing and come back to the commission for deliberation. Seems straightforward to me.
Yeah.
Jamie, any thoughts?
You know, I I take issue with a lot of what the state did to begin with, but, but so what?
John?
No, I'm okay.
I would move to approve him with a stipulation that on page nine of fifteen, that we make a specific reference to where you can, the source of the second unit guidelines that we talked about.
Yeah, for clarity, yeah, I think it's a great idea, yeah.
I will second that motion.
Okay, that's, yeah, just to cite the state law provision for the second unit guidelines. And I'm presuming it's either in the government code or in public resources code, but it may be somewhere else. Okay, we have a motion and a second, a discussion on the motion?
I think it's, I think that's a good idea. I like it.
All right. Sheri, let's call roll then on item one as amended.
Kulisi?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for that work, staff. That's.
Yeah, good work.
That's a lot of work.
And for explaining it to us.
That was even more.
That was mostly Alex, so good job.
You know, what's interesting is that we have these daily conversations with the community. These types of questions come up on a pretty regular basis.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, the clearer, the clearer we can make the code to the people that walk up to the window, the better off we'll all be.
And considering ADUs are popular, you know, the more clear we can make it on that, the better.
Item two, an appeal of a director determination regarding all-electric new construction.
Thank you, Chair, again, and commissioners. So item two for tonight is an appeal of a director determination regarding a denial to a request for an exemption to section nine, one, one thousand six of the Ojai Municipal Code, which requires new construction in low-rise residential and non-residential buildings to be all-electric. This is all at the property of four oh one East Topo Topa Street, which currently is slated to have new residential structures consisting of a single-family residence, an ADU, and a JADU. The applicant has claimed this requirement would present a hardship as defined by section nine, one, one thousand nine B of the Ojai Municipal Code, which states that if an applicant believes that circumstances exist that make it a hardship or infeasible to meet the requirements of this article, they can request an exemption. And in applying for that exemption, the burden will lie with the applicant to show proof of hardship or infeasibility. The applicant's initial evidence of this hardship was presented in the form of a solar evaluation from California Solar Electric, which provided the applicant an evaluation that illustrated that the effective annual solar access for this property would be less than seventy percent or greater of the output of an unshaded photovoltaic array on an annual basis. So this meant that the applicant was not required to install solar as the effective solar access would be less than eighty continuous square feet, which according to state law is grounds for an exemption. Staff denied this exemption.
That's an exemption from installing solar panels?
Yes, sir, yes, yes. So having, having that evaluation from California Solar Electric was proof of the grounds for an exemption to installing solar on that property. Staff, however, denied this exemption request based on this evidence because though the state no longer requires the applicant to install solar, that does not mean the applicant cannot install solar. So thus, the applicant would still be able to, would still be more than capable to gain valuable cost savings in the long run in utilizing a solar installation on that property. In light of that decision, the applicant appealed the denial to this body and submitted a request for an appeal on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. As a result, this item was initially presented to this body on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, in which the applicant presented as evidence of a hardship the aforementioned solar evaluation from California Solar Electric, with staff continuing to recommend denial based on that evidence. This body came to the conclusion to continue this item in order to allow the applicant to provide more evidence to confirm his claim that this requirement entailed a hardship or infeasibility. In light of that decision on December second, twenty twenty-two, the. the applicant provided a cost comparison of electric versus gas appliances in order to demonstrate a prohibitive cost discrepancy between the two types of appliances. On December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, the community development department sent an incomplete letter. In response to the submitted chart, as the comparison chart did not use models of similar quality, and thus a like-for-like comparison was not possible. In response to that letter, the applicant resubmitted the chart on April third, and then on April tenth submitted by request, an entire packaged resubmital that included all relevant materials from which staff deemed complete on April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Now, community development staff inquired with the city's building inspector to analyze the applicant's hardship claim through the aforementioned cost comparison chart. To summarize the building inspector's position, the crux of cost depends on installation specifications of the manufacturer. So some models require to be, to be installed indoors, some models are required to be installed outdoors, and depending on where they're installed would also entail if they need additional building permits for things like venting or separate mechanical rooms. So in review of the proposed appliances from the submitted cost comparison chart, the building inspector has in almost every case found suitable and effective cheaper options that would suffice and not be cost prohibitive. Models that the inspector traced back to local stores like Ace Hardware in Miners Oaks. Therefore, as a result of the solar evaluation not precluding the applicant from using solar and suitable cost-effective electric appliances available to the applicant, it is still staff's position to recommend denial for this, for this exemption request. So happy to take any questions off of that, thanks.
John, Jamie, questions?
Yeah, so the inspector, when they were looking at these units, they basically took the units that the applicant provided, and then they compared them. What were they comparing them to, I guess is my question, like, are you, or, or, did the inspector say, well, they're not like-for-like as far as all-electric and then gas, right? Versus, meaning like, here, I'm just trying to think of an example, like, for example, there's a, on the, on the, where we're looking at gas and electric, there's an example of an eighty gallon water heater. And then on the, on the, the all-electric, or I'm sorry, on the gas versus electric, on the gas side, there is a tankless water heater. So that would be an example where there's not like-for-like, right? Okay, gotcha, all right, I'm just trying to understand.
Are there, are there tankless water heaters that are all-electric?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I have the other kind and like it, but.
Yeah, 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 I do too.
Questions?
Is it possible to have a central water tank that would be like located in the garage so it wouldn't require a separate building? That would service all three units?
All three units? That would probably be difficult only because.
The main residence.
The main residence, the junior ADU and the.
The G.
And the detached ADU.
And the attached ADU. I, we would have to look further to see if that's possible. Definitely for the main house and the junior ADU. Typically, there's a separate unit for the, for the ADU itself, even if it's attached.
Commissioner, if I, if I can add as well, there are many options, right? There are many possibilities that we can think of. I think the crux of the matter is what type of manufacturer specifications are required for individual models that we have chosen, right? So I think that's part of the crux of tonight, which is, are we choo, you know, can we find models that are cost-effective regardless of their manufacturer installation specifications, right? I think that's what we're going here, because I, as you mentioned ma'am, there are many options that both the applicant and us can come up with in terms of being installed here and being sold there, et cetera. It all depends on the type of model that we, that we kind of can agree to and whether or not that model and its cost is prohibitive for the applicant, yeah.
I've got a question about what we're dealing with here in the law or the code. Because it's, I think we're under the standard will not enable the applicant to rent or sell the building at a reasonable rate of return. So it seems like the cost differential is the first step. But then the question, if it's, even if it's more expensive, you would have to demonstrate that you wouldn't be able to get a rate, a reasonable rate of return in this market. And of course, we have no real estate person here to provide us that expert testimony that they couldn't get a reasonable rate of return. In this market, of course, you can probably charge people for almost whatever you want to, given, given it's a landlord's market, basically. So that, that just puzzles me because just showing a differential in cost or expenses doesn't really answer the question whether that person's going to be able to get a reasonable rate of return.
Does, does staff have a standard by which to measure that assertion?
It's subjective. There is no, there is no standard in which we can use to say, point to here, it's this number. It's subjective.
Actually, I believe that Commissioner Starkweather's point actually supports the, the appellant in this situation, or the applicant in this situation. Because what you're saying is you can charge anything, which means that you don't get any benefit of incremental expenses. By having a conforming electric house, you don't get any benefit from it, from the marketplace. And I think that's probably true. I think that you, you know, right now, it doesn't seem to be the marketplace.
Are we clarifying this or are we deliberating?
Thank you, I want to make sure we're not deliberating or asking.
No, I am deliberating, I, I am, I am, I'm asking Jeffrey because I, I'm not sure if that's what he's saying.
Well, when you think of a rate of return, you think of how much you invest or how much it costs you, and then what is your percentage rate of return? Well, we don't even have that. It would seem like there would be a standard, what is reasonable, but some range. And we're not even dealing with that aspect of this, it doesn't seem like to me. We're just dealing with the cost of the appliance comparison.
That's the data that we have.
That's the data that we have in front of us.
Questions?
No.
Then. I have, I have questions for the appellant, but I think not for staff. So let's, let's hear from the appellant. Please come forward, you are not on a three-minute limit.
Okay, well, I can answer the question that you're concerned with, and it's, 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 what I'm applying for, the, what, what you're arguing, it does not apply. It doesn't apply what I'm, what I'm, what I'm asking for. Reasonable rate of return is not in exceptions or exemptions. That's in, that is in something else, help me out here with this. What I'm, what I'm applying for, reasonable, the reasonable rate, because I've sent many letters, because I think there was confusion last time, and you kept bringing up reasonable rate of return. And that does not apply to a hardship for cost effectiveness. The state law requires that reach codes be cost-effective. And the only way they were able to get the reach codes passed is when California came out with all new construction, residential construction was required to have solar. So as soon as they came out with that, they said, okay, then it's cost-effective. Now we can outlaw gas. And, and so that's how they were able to pass the reach code. So when they passed it, they put exceptions in there for things that people didn't think about. And they didn't think about people that were not able to put solar on their house. I, I have all, all the figures in here on how much a appliance just costs. As far as the water heaters go, there's not many options, there's only one. And it's in title twenty-four, it's a heat pump water heater. It's the one I have specked out, specked out there, it's a, called A.L. Smith or Rheem makes them. And they're all about the same price. I mean, unless you go to some expensive commercial one. You can't get an electric, look it, an electric water heater is much different than a heat pump water heater. They're, they're very inefficient, they're outlawed, they're not even on the title twenty-four that I have. Since I have title twen, since I can't have solar, which, okay, that was another point that was brought up. I could still put solar on my house, but it doesn't make sense. Solar barely pays for itself, it's getting better, but it barely pays for itself if you have a lot of solar. You know, that, that pays back, and it, and it doesn't pay you back quick, you know, it's, I don't think it's down to fifteen years or something like that, it pays itself back. So if you are just a little bit shaded, the solar will barely ever pay just for itself, much less help pay for the electricity. So what I'm trying to say is that the, the cost effectiveness, you know, you brought this up last time. And I, it was hard to sit here and listen to you guys deliberate over that because that is not in what I am, in my exceptions or exemptions or hardship. It's not, it does not something that is, has to be made up over time. This is, if you, if you look at how much it increases the electric bill, and you got, one thing you got to remember too, if you're using all-electric and you don't have solar to pay for itself, you get thrown in a higher tier. And electricity bills are even higher than I put in here. This was an average, middle-of-the-road tier. This was in the, an expensive tier. I've done really a lot of work on this, and, you know, it's, it's hard for me to say everything that I think of, you know, all day long when I'm, when I'm thinking about this stuff, but, I mean, bottom line is, state law requires reach codes to be cost-effective. And I have, I think I've more than proved that to, to, I mean, to, hopefully to everybody, that if you don't have solar to help you out over the years, they're not cost-effective. And not just by a little bit, by quite a bit. If you look at my numbers on how much it costs, and these numbers have been vetted by staff, I've asked them before if they vetted them, they had no argument with the numbers. They did have argument with the outdoor water heater closet. I've been, nightmare trying to get that. Because in the, in the installation manual, and it's what, what the inspector goes by, it says water heater shall be indoors. Well, indoors can be outside in a, in a water heater, a water heater closet. Doesn't have to be in your house, in a JADU, next to your bedroom, next to your bed. And, and that's what they're telling me. They're telling me that, 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 that it has to be indoors. So it has, you have to take this water heater that's this big, this tall, makes a lot of noise, no other option, and put it in your bedroom. That's what they're saying. Because they say that it has to be indoors, you can't.
Indoors means in your bedroom?
Well, in, in a JADU, when it's all open, I mean, yeah, well, I mean, yeah. And well, that, you know, the, if you looked at my plans, on the JADU, there's a, it's, it's all open, one closet, that's right next to the bed, bathroom and kitchen, basically. Little dining room, it's, it's all one room. So in order to put it indoors, it would have to be in that area, and they make a lot of noise. In the, in the, in the, in the manufacturer's recommendations, it says not to put them in, you know, close to where it would bother occupants from noise.
Okay, hold up just a moment, please, for staff. Is there something in the state law or in the code that says that the water heater for a JADU has to be within the confines of the JADU? Or can it be, if it's outside, it's clearly not in the JADU, but does it have to be in the JADU?
No.
Does the water heater for the detached ADU have to be within the footprint or augmented footprint with a, an outside structure? Does it have to be there?
Have to be, no, it's one of the options. You could have it in a garage, you could have it as a separate structure. You could have it as a tankless, you could have it as a tank.
I'm sorry to, you know, like interrupt.
And it's important that I, that I mention this because that's what I was writing down, because that's an incorrect statement.
That what?
That the junior ADU has to have a separate.
Well, that's true, the junior ADU does not have to have a separate one. But if you're, if you're renting, okay, so if you have apartments and you have, and, and one person has an ADU, I mean, it has a jun, I mean, it has a unit, but he has his water heater in the garage of his neighbor, does that make sense? I mean, you can do it, but, but it doesn't make sense, I mean, is it an option that I could put it outside? It doesn't make sense, you rent out, you rent out an apartment? And then, and then someone, something, there's trouble with your water heater, it makes much more sense to have your own water heater outside that you can have it serviced without having your neighbor open his garage to go in and service the water heater. So, and so that's what I'm thinking, and, and Lucas is right, you can use it on the, the same water heater. But then, then, you know, electricity, you know, electricity bill is going to be different, which is okay, it could be worked out, but, but let's go to the, to the ADU. The ADU, I, I can't, I can't put it inside the house because, you know, this is, there's no place to put it inside the house.
You just contended that it had to be inside the JADU.
No, I'm saying that's what they're saying, that's what they're telling me. Well, that's what they're telling me, they say, because, because the, the installation manual says indoors. So they're taking that as indoors, inside the house, cannot be outside. Huh? Inside the conditioned space. I've called, I've called both Rheem and A.O. many, many times, and they all say, I've gotten almost a different person every time I've called, and they all say, yes, it's completely okay to put them outside as long as you follow the, the recommendation of the, of the installation manual. And, and it's okay. But they went and sent me a letter, because they don't send people letters. I've asked them if they'd send me a letter, if one person said they would, they never got back to me. It, it's hard, they won't send you a letter separate from the installation manual. Now, then I called the Ventura, this, anybody might not like this, but I called the county of Ventura engineer, the plumbing engineer, plan checker, and he says it's absolutely okay to put them outside in a water heater closet with the proper ventilation, they're doing multiple projects right now. All units, all units have individual places outside. So I've done a lot of research and a lot of calling around, you know, on that, on that subject. So, so.
You're not suggesting to put the JADU water heater inside the JADU?
No, I'm, no, I don't want to.
But your contention was they told you you had to.
Well, at first, they won't give me credit for the eleven thousand dollars that I put in there for the two outdoor units. That's what he was saying, he said, he said, I won't get, I'm not going to give you credit for that because the installation manual says you have to put them indoors. But indoors doesn't mean in your house in a conditioned area. Because they're, they're hybrid heat pump water heaters, it's, it's kind of a whole new thing, and I've been learning a lot about them. And I don't have an option to go with a, just a regular one, because then I can't pass title, title twenty-four, because I don't have solar. So they're real strict on that.
So I got a quick question.
Yeah.
In, in your ideal state, you, you outline that you would do a tankless water heater. And just, have you looked into the tankless electric water heaters?
It's not allowed on, they're, they're the most inefficient energy water heater you can own, is a tankless electric. Can you imagine an electric water heater trying, you know, how much electricity it would take to heat that water up? No, but I had, what I did mention was is, I'd like to do like, you know, a hybrid version, hybrid plug-in version of this, where I, I could use, you know, gas to heat my water, do my washer and dryer, and maybe run my fireplaces that I hope that I want to build. I couldn't imagine having a rental in a fireplace, there's a wood burning, you know, at a wood burning. I would, I would put a gas log in there if I was a rental. And then, you know, if I was to move in there one day, I would have a beautiful house with a, with a nice fireplace. I'm a masonry contractor, I've been a masonry contractor, so I love fireplaces. I've been building them since I was eighteen years old. And I, I think if I, you know, if, if I get denied the gas on my exemption and exemption, And I, I think if I, you know, if, if I get denied the gas on my exemption and exemption, um, that uh, I, I don't think I would do it. I don't think I would have a fireplace in a house where the tenant had to use, bring hardwood in and start a fire and, and smoke everybody out. Just when I drove up here, there was a big, there was a fire going on down here in one of the houses, and you could see all the smoke going up and stuff, so. Um, so the, the fireplaces, I think, might be out if I can't get gas log for them. I, I don't know what else to do. Um, and, and this, you know, it's, it's a legitimate request. It's, it's not like I'm, I want gas and I'm going to get it and da, 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 da. It's legitimate, I, uh, I, I don't know what else I can tell you guys, other than my, my main, I wrote them a letter because they kept saying, um Mara and Lucas and whoever else, Alex, kept saying that I can install, install solar if I want to. But yeah, but it, you can't get a solar exemption if the, if it's not gonna even pay for the solar. The solar panels, you know, so. Why would, would anybody put solar on their house if, if it didn't do them any good, or if it wouldn't pay them back? Um, so, that's that part of it, um.
I got, I got a couple more questions.
Okay.
If that's okay.
I like the questions.
It's all right, um, so you, and I, I don't know if this is right, but I've, I looked up the model numbers and like, for example, on the, the junior A D U, uh, you outline a fifty end, which is like a fifty gallon water heater, which is, that's pretty big for a, a one unit, I'm assuming one person would be there.
Agree.
Yeah, because you probably go twenty gallons and be fine.
I'd love to have like a little, in, you know, like some, I was just came back from Thailand and, and they had these little water heaters inside the house. I'd like to have a little water heater inside the house. But the um, the Title 24 specifically says that I needed a, a, a heat pump water heater. And the smallest one they make is fifty gallon. They make a fifty gallon, a sixty-six, and an eighty. So right now I have an eighty, but, and, and also, I also have, on my approved set of plans, I have a, a water heater enclosure, outdoor. Now, the draftsman that drafted it up, I asked him to put one out for the junior A D U. He didn't, I missed it, went through plan check, it's not on the plan. That's something that I'm going to have to ask staff if I can do. Hopefully, they'll say yes, or I'll have to join them in the garage. I'll have to get a little bigger one, it says fifty, I'll have to go to an eighty to feed the upstairs if you won't let me put a little water heater enclosure outside. As long as it's within the setbacks, as long as it meets all the criteria, as long as it meet, uh, that meets the specifications of the um instruction manual.
And, and I'm sorry, you were referencing that this is per state code or state law, that you had to get these water pumps?
It is.
You were referencing-
It, it, it's a state law that, uh, it's not a state law, but you have to pass Title 24. So in order for me to pass Title 24 without solar and use all electric, it, easy to pass Title 24 if I could have a little bit of gas. But if, to be all electric, they have to be heat pump water heaters, um, and every, you know, all the other stuff that we had mentioned, it has to be electric, it has to be high efficient electric. It's expensive and doesn't matter how high efficient you get, it's still expensive to run. It, it's, it's three hundred dollars a month per place, per, per unit to run for an electric, all electric versus a hundred dollars with my hybrid. What, well, what I'm, what I'm proposing is, like I said, is a, a, a combination. I, and so the, the, the four stair units, in all three units, I would use um uh, heat pump, heat pump technology, which would be all electric, it makes sense. It does make, even my F A U guy says, where, where it really dings you is the, is the water heaters. Because I had to build the enclosures outside, that's why I had the money put in there for the, it's going to be more money for that. Um, and so it's, it's, so for cost effectiveness, it's, it's more money to buy and more money per month, that month after month after month for years and years and years and years and years. And, so let's say, let's, let's say that, um, you guys don't give me my exception, and all of a sudden the law changes, that all of a sudden gas is illegal to, to, to not enforce? Then um, I don't have the infrastructure for it. Okay, so uh, maybe that didn't make sense, I'm sorry. So uh, so the city of Berkeley was the very first one to come out with the reach code. You know, I don't know if everybody's heard about it, but they just had their, their reach code revoked because the ninth district had um, had shot them down because they weren't, they weren't complying. Now, um-
We can address that later in the deliberation section for, for more detail, but continue.
Yeah, but the city of Ojai says that their, their reach code is different, but it's not. And they're not going to admit it unless someone challenges the law and, and takes them to court and everything. I, I can't do that, I'm not, I'm not interested in doing that, I don't want to do it. But I'm just giving you an example, that the city of Berkeley, they have the same thing, no gas, reach code, and uh, um, they, they're shot down. So many, many, if you, it, just Google it on the internet, it's all over the internet. Just happened on the thirty-first, was the last day they had to appeal it. They didn't appeal it, um, and thirty-first of last month. So that's just one example of uh, why I'm worried that if I go all electric, I won't have the infrastructure to go gas. And I really want gas. I really, really, really want it, I mean, um.
Another quick question, have you, have you considered, I mean, obviously, there was a recent spike in gas. I mean, that, so gas is variable as well, so it can go up, it can go down. I mean, historically, it's always been cheaper, but we don't know if that's always going to be how it's going to go.
Exactly, and I, I understand.
And then, and then electric is actually supposed to get down, supposed to go down, it's supposed to become more efficient, uh, like mini split technology, it's actually more efficient to heat your house with mini splits than it is to have a gas heater.
I agree.
Yeah, so that's kind of the trend, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, um, that is kind of the trend. Um, but uh, uh, but, but there, there was a spike in gas, but it was, the spike in gas was short-lived, it's come down a lot. I have a recent gas bill in my package.
Yeah, I noticed, yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, and it's, and it's come down quite a bit.
Yeah.
And believe me, and as soon as that electric is going to go up too. Electricity is going to go up, as soon as everybody starts getting on the electricity thing, and there's more demand, and there's more, I mean, we can't really talk about the future, but I know, I know that gas has been coming down quite a bit. My electric bills, I mean, my gas bills have been coming down quite a bit. And uh, and that's why I supplied a, a current copy of my gas bill. But uh, I, I, I don't, I don't know what else to, to tell you guys, uh-
Do you plan to live in this residence?
Uh, I don't, not right now, I don't, no. They're going to be, they're going to be-
I thought you, you can't have a junior A D U unless you live in it, according to the statute we just approved.
Okay.
So what are you going to do?
No, 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 that's not true. You can have a junior A D U if you don't live in it.
No?
You can have a junior A D U, but you must live in either the A D U, the main residence, or the junior A D U.
That's what our-
In order to rent it out.
In order to rent anything out.
Yes. I guess you could just let it sit there and nobody live in it, but-
In order to get the permit, right?
No, well, that's not, that's not, that's-
In order to get the permit.
This is what our code says, we just passed it, we just went through it.
I, I was listening to it, but it's not true that you have, you just can't rent the junior A D U out. You don't have to live on the property.
That's what it says here.
No, you only have to live on the prop, you can't rent all three separately, remember what Lucas said? But you, you can rent two of them, and you let one sit vacant, if that's what you guys want to do.
I don't think that's the way-
And I asked, I-
This, this state law.
It's state law, yeah, it's a, and it's been on the books since twenty twenty-one. Um, and so we've been, we've been following it, but now we're putting it officially in our um code. But that's true. If you're renting, if you have a junior A D U, you're going to have a deed restriction that requires you to live in either the main house, the junior A D U, or the, or the A D U. Did I say A D U, junior A D U, and main house, yes?
You gotta live in one of them.
I'll live in one of them.
But, but I didn't have to sign no deed restriction?
That deed restriction is required prior to certificate of occupancy.
I want to rethink it.
Huh?
Ooh.
Big, big.
Well, big issue. That's not what, that's not, that's not what I understood when I applied for my, um, my permit. It's, you can't rent it separately. You can't, you can, you don't have to live on the property, you can rent the main house-
You can rent it separately, you can't sell it separately.
You can't what?
Sell it separately.
You can't sell it separately.
No.
But the state law that we just heard cited says if you have a main residence, a junior A D U, an A D U, all in the same parcel, the owner has to live in one of them.
In order to rent the J A D U out.
In order to comply with the state law. To get the permit. You can, you can, you can live in the main residence and not rent the other two. Have them for family and friends. But you can't have it all be a rental. But, but-
Is that true?
Is that correct now? That's correct. You-
The statement hasn't changed.
Just the permit process.
You want to think about this some more?
I, well, I do want to think about this some more, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that that was, that was the case. I'm not going to, I'm not going to be living in it, so what do I do? Do I scrap the whole project?
You need to talk to the bill.
I don't know.
If you, if you need to have three units, dwelling units on the property, then you, then you have to-
Or even two.
But two you can do.
You have to live in one, if it's a junior A D U.
If, if one of the two is a junior A D U, you have to live in one of the two.
If you have a, a main residence and an A D U, you don't have to live in either one of them.
Right, so you could, you could scrap the Jade-
Yeah, tear it down and-
A D U. Forget the J A D U, and build a house and an A D U, and rent them both out. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah.
So what do you, so what do you, I mean, what would I do at this stage? So I would-
That's just the permit process.
I said, that's just the permitting process, so in order to get your building permit, you'd have to show that.
I already have a building permit.
Well, then, there you go.
I already have a building permit, and, and, and nobody has told me that I needed to do a deed restriction.
What happens with the occupancy permit?
Can't occupy it.
Can't occupy it until the deed restriction is recorded.
Oh, you are just on this whole thing at the wrong time and upside down.
I don't understand where it says that, it says that you can't rent out the J A D U.
We're getting, we're getting off a task here in terms of the appeal itself, I'd like to stay on that versus the, the A D U, junior A D U, and main residence piece.
That's, that, he needs to understand the ramifications of this down the road, so that he knows what, what to do with it.
That was my point, there are other factors in play here. We may want to continue this item until the appellant decides how he wants to deal with these three dwelling units.
Can you make them separate rentals? If you do, uh, the, the A D, I mean, um-
You can certainly make them separate rentals, but you must live in one of those three.
If you have three.
If you take out the junior A D U, that provision is taken off the table in terms of the deed restriction. We cannot deed restrict A D Us. State law prohibits that now.
But he's built one.
But, so there's nothing that I, that, that need, you guys need to tell me before I get my building permit on this?
You've already received your building permit, and from what I gather, you've already started construction, correct?
Yes.
So before certificate of occupancy, you shall record a deed restriction regarding that junior A D U. Now, if you take that junior A D U off the table, and you modify your plans, and you go in for modification for building, then that restriction is removed.
I didn't know that. I, 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 I didn't know that, I, you know?
Yeah, so do you want to think about it for a while and come back?
Work with, work with Lucas, get clarity. Because that might change this.
It changed the gas meter.
Potentially.
It doesn't change the gas.
Well, no, it doesn't change that, no, I mean, I think we're still, we're still have this subject that we need to address. I think, yeah, I think we just stay on task.
So what happens if you have, what happens if you live there, and then you move out? And you rent it out, then what happens? Was, let's just say, so you have to live, you have to stay there?
You gotta sell it. According to what we, I, because I asked that question, uh, with a junior A D U, you have to live there. You can't rent it. Can't rent the main residence with a junior A D U. Unless you eliminate it as a junior A D U.
You could rent one or the other. You could live in the junior A D U.
That's what I mean, you have to live in it. So if you decide you're going to move, then you gotta sell it, or you can't live there. The owner has to live there. If it's a junior A D U.
Is, is a junior A D U defined as, is a junior A D U defined in law as a rental unit? Or could a junior A D U be a granny flat that is not rented, but is used by another member of the family, say, um, a returning college student, or a grandmother, or something? And so that you have a main house, and the main house has a, has, has an accessible part of it that is accessible uniquely and has its own um amenities. And is that the definition of a junior A D U, or is it the, is the fact that it gets used as a rental unit? Or is it, I mean, obviously, both, but-
Yeah, I mean, it typically is, is a, a rental unit, but it can be identi- here, here's the important thing that to understand as a junior A D U. The junior A D U can be literally a bedroom, and it could have a hot plate. And then you could share sanitation facilities, and it's a junior A D U. As simple as that.
It's, it's the renting of it that turns it into a junior A D U?
No, it's the identification on a set of plans that's submitted through planning and then processed through building. That's what identifies it, because then we take that information and we apply that through our A P R, our annual progress report, which then goes to H C D, and then it becomes a unit that is then ever removed, meaning it's physically in the system, ever removed, it's got to be somehow replaced as a unit. That's, that's the standard that we have already within our code.
The replacement statute, the separate one, yeah, yeah.
So it, the unit piece is extremely important, because once you identify that as a unit, and you want to take that off the table, that's a problem. How are you going to then identify that unit somewhere else? Either on the site or through our, our statutes.
When you're saying you, you mean you, the city, or you?
You, the applicant, you, the, you, the property owner.
I thought that was just for affordable, that you would have to replace.
A D Us and junior A D Us qualify, same thing with compliance units, qualify as an affordable unit. That state, that state law changed in two thousand-
Law, they're affordable, it doesn't matter what the rent is.
Yeah, that's, that's how we're able to count those, we count those, and it, it's sort of like you're officially creating something that gives you a right to use it for that purpose. And when you sell it, that, you sell that right with the deed restriction to use it. So it's, you've created a new unit within your-
Goes with the land.
Thing, and, and we have approved it as being affordable, because that's technically what it is. So we have a replacement statute.
Has that always been the law?
So the junior A D U law, those provisions, well, junior A D Us came into play two thousand and seventeen, leaning to two thousand and eighteen. And then these regulations that we're talking about, in terms of the deed restriction piece, really refined themselves in, at the beginning of twenty twenty-one. They're now just getting into our code, but they've been state law since twenty twenty-one. Now we're catching up with state law.
Because I was told that I didn't need to live in it when I, when I applied for my permit.
No, you, you-
I was told.
You, no. You will, you will have a deed restriction that would be required, it is state law. And it is, it is going to be baked into our code moving forward to city council.
Yeah, it's going to be, but it wasn't when I applied.
It's still a state law. Period.
We're just catching up with the state. That's one of the quirks, if it's a state law, we still have to abide by it, even if the code says something different.
They overrule us.
But even, what about the gas thing, the state law, was, requires it to be cost effective? And, you know, you were arguing that that wasn't, not the case.
It's a reach code, that is not a state law.
That's more restrictive.
Correct.
Yeah, our reach code is more restrictive.
You're actually under the old reach code, because there's a new one that doesn't even have exemptions.
Right.
Well, it looks like I'm in trouble. Serious trouble, because now I don't know what to do. Uh, I have, uh, it's, it's, it's designed to the, in a way that I don't think you could change it into a main, you know, addition to the main residence with having a separate staircase.
Well, I don't think it has to be in addition to the, the house itself, it could be a separate dwelling.
It could be a separate dwelling. They could be two separate detached dwellings.
No, but I know, but.
They're currently attached.
One of them is attached. And one of them is already. ADU is attached by definition.
Oh, the J, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, it's part of the house.
It's attached, but it has a, a, a exterior staircase. And, uh.
How far along is the building?
Uh, we're, we're almost done, um, forming and building the foundation.
Just make it part of the original house and don't have a junior ADU.
But I don't know if I can do that with, with, uh, with the, the exterior stairs.
If you're removing the junior ADU, it's gonna have to go through building and through a zone clearance as a minimum. And we'd look at it and then figure it out where it goes from there.
Is there, is there some reason that that would not be legal to eliminate a JADU?
Hasn't been created yet, has it?
It hasn't been on, it's not on the books yet, meaning, uh, I have not done the 2023 provisions. Those come online next year. Meaning that's, what's happening this year would then be what I send to HCD for next year. So if there's modifications before that time point, then it's not on the books. So it's not on the books yet, is what I'm saying.
But what's not on the books yet?
Your junior ADU, or your ADU for that matter, or the main residence. All three of those get counted as a part of the APR. Annual progress report, which then goes to HCD, which is then provided to city council as a consent item, um, as a matter, as a point of reference.
We're working on it.
Correct.
But where, but where would it, where was it even ever mentioned that I need, I had to live there um, in order to rent it out? I, I, I was under, I knew that it, in order to rent the JADU out separately, I needed to live there. But I didn't know that, um.
So it doesn't, it sounds like you didn't understand the information that was provided to, and so we can talk offline, but that is the requirement.
So this is kind of beyond our purview, because this is the.
Yes.
Well, we, the building inspector and so forth, them to work out. But the question is, do, does she want to go ahead with the ruling on what might even, may not even be applicable tonight, or would like to continue the matter and come back?
Let's.
Well.
Let them figure that out before we have to.
I think, I think that would be a good idea. I mean, might just scrap the whole thing. Cause it's hard right now. It's, 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 it's hard to do any kind of changes like that, especially when I've, all the plans have been approved. The, I've already dug all the footings. Uh, the engineer have done all their thing. I paid all the permits. I paid for the sewer and everything. It's, it's, I might have to, it's, it's three nice rentals, you know?
So just, just so I understand, you had mentioned earlier, I'm gonna, I'm just reclarifying something. You had mentioned earlier that the closets, the outdoor closets were something that you had to do. But that's something that we're gonna have to go through an amendment through building and probably through a zone clearance through planning as well, correct? That's not something that's currently on the plans, correct?
Well, one of them is.
Are both of them?
No. You mean.
That already sounds like an amendment to what we're talking about. And then beyond that, if you're looking at scrapping the junior ADU, that sounds like something you'd include within it anyway, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna live in it, you know, so I don't wanna let, I can't let the place sit there vacant. Doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense to.
There's a lot of that. I, it, it seems to me, folks, that we're better off to continue this item to a date uncertain.
Yes.
Are, do we, are we done with the public hearing, so we can deliberate, or?
Oh, we haven't even had the public hearing.
I know, so we probably.
Still talking to the appellant.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have even said that, cause that was deliberation.
Yeah, no, I think that we need to continue it, uh, at this point, um.
You, you need to, now that you have a different understanding of the regulations that pertain to your certificate of occupancy, you need to rethink maybe what you want to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'll have to do, yeah, um.
In that case, I would like to move to.
Wait a minute, we gotta close the public hearing.
We haven't had the public hearing yet.
And then we have to deliberate.
Yeah, you're jumping ahead.
I'm jumping, jumping ahead.
Just, just to clarify, this is not a public hearing. It was not publicly noticed.
Oh, I see.
It is a hearing. Yeah, I just, there's a difference between the two, and I want, I want to make sure that. And if we're doing a public hearing, it's what we had previously.
Yeah.
Where there's a.
A continuation of the previous public hearing.
Previous hearing. I think it's important that, that we just distinguish between the two.
Okay, so we could have comments though.
Public hearing would then be something that we notice in the paper. It's a 500-foot, 300-foot radius.
The first time either.
No, this is an appeal which requires it to be noticed in the same fashion in which the appeal was provided a decision. Which, we provided the decision to the appellant or the applicant in this case.
And the public can comment, though.
Absolutely, that's why it's a hearing.
Okay, okay.
So we go from applicant to.
We go.
Public comment.
From applicant to public comment on this hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but can I ask one more question? Uh, I didn't quite get it when, if you, if you were to live there and you moved out, um, you, you say you'd have to sell it.
You couldn't rent it if you're not living in it. It's got a junior ADU.
You couldn't, you couldn't, so you just let it sit there vacant?
It's got a deed restriction.
You're gonna be forced to sell it.
The deed, it's, it is a deed, you cannot, you cannot sell a junior ADU or an ADU. That is not.
Sell them all together.
Sell them all together.
The whole thing.
Correct, you sell the whole project together, not independently, correct.
No, but, 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 can you rent it? I mean, no, um, you said I can't rent it, but, so if I was to move out and it wasn't already.
You can absolutely rent it. You can rent two of those three units. You can rent the main house, and you can live in the junior ADU, and you can rent the ADU. Or you could live in the eight, there's three different scenarios that I could just talk about. I'm not gonna mention them, but yes.
But can you, can you li- can you not live there at all and not rent the JADU out?
If you, if you rent the main house and you don't, and you don't identify the junior ADU as being rented, and you don't identify, identify the ADU as being rented and, and you just rent out the main house, I think there's provisions within the junior ADU, um, deed restriction that would allow that. However, if you're looking to rent more than just the main residence, I think that's where you run into a situation where you.
Oh, no, no. And that's, and that's what I understood when I got the building permit.
I think we better ask the city attorney at this point.
Yes, that, that's what I remember, exactly what you just said. What? If, if I was to, if I was to rent the house out and the ADU out, not the JADU.
No, that wouldn't work.
I just, no, go on.
I would say per, per the deed, deed restriction, we have already, I mean, we're getting about two or three junior ADUs that are coming in a year. And per that, per those deed restrictions, what you just described there in terms of the description would not be allowed.
I didn't see that anywhere when I, when I, um, applied for my application. And, and don't you have to do a deed restriction before you even do your, I mean, at least be notified of any, of anything like that?
But this part of the code was already there, wasn't it?
For state law.
Oh.
No, it's, yeah, but it says, but the state law says that.
All these red, uh, things are new ones.
If you're not a resident, the first thing, you can't rent out the ADU, the junior ADU, only. Now, but you can still rent out the ADU.
I would prefer to talk offline with him and get clarification. We're going in circles at this point.
Can we move on to public comment?
Thank you.
Well, I have a question, and that is if, if, if the appellant wants to pull this, uh, is that the end of it? I mean, we don't, do we still have to have a, a hearing? And do we still need to deliberate and do we still need to vote? If he says halfway through this process, I'm, I want to pull it, cause I need to rethink the development.
He might want, he might not want a decision on this.
Yes.
I, 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 yeah, probably just hold off on the whole thing. I mean, I might walk away from the whole budget.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna continue.
Yeah, we just, we would go and continue it to a date uncertain and then he either comes back or he doesn't.
Right. We haven't heard from the public and we're deliberating, folks.
Okay.
I will come, I will come back and we'll shape fashion for him and, uh, I've gone too far. It's, uh, I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I can't, I can't even fathom that I wasn't told this at first. I remember, um, when I applied for the whole thing, I asked a bunch of questions on that, that exact topic. And, and I said, well, what happens to the, the JADU if you don't live there? And they basically said it was, it's just, you can't rent it separately. You can't rent all three separately, but you can let, you can, you can rent the, uh, residence and the main residence. I mean, residence and the, and the ADU. But the JADU, you would keep it empty for, for yourself or something like that when you come back and, and visit.
We're going in circles on that.
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah.
Let's, let's move on.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do have one speaker card for the public comment portion of this item. Mr. Steingold.
Thank you. Um, in all due respect to the building, community development planner, um, if I were to walk into city hall and say, I want to buy, I want to build a house, I want to have a JADU and ADU, was, is there something in writing somewhere that I will be given that says I have to live there? Or am I just sort of like, get a building permit and then go and then find out after the fact? Don't have the answer, I'm just, there, there's not enough flow through the, to the customer to tell them, this should all be upfront. Okay, wherever that goes. Um, but I'm more concerned by the fact that the electric bill is gonna be a hundred and something odd dollars more a month for the tenants by switching to electric. And that goes directly against the affordability that everybody in town is fighting for. We want to make places more affordable, but now we just made the operating expenses more expensive. So now we're not really helping the tenants. And I think the exceptions are money. And all good intentions, look, whether I believe in gas or not, it's irrelevant, all right? It's the process. It's like, you want me to have solar? Can't have solar. I have two oak trees on my house. Do I have to take the oak tree down to, so I can have solar, so I can now afford to have electric, so it services? I'm just saying is, this thing is got, it's, it's, the intentions are good, but the process is bad. It hasn't been well thought out as to where we're going, the exceptions. The cost of electric is too high, all right? The cost of the equipment is too high. It's not effective. So that's a question, and that, what I'm like, anyway, um, so that's where I am on that. Oh, primary residence to live in. Live in means primary residence, as in, that's where I vote? Okay. Thank you. All I would, would really hope is that if anybody walks into city hall and they ask for something, they either get everything and it's, and this is a big deal about renting your house out. I mean, this is like, I'm an investor, I want to build it. It should be in big letters. You have to live in the primary residence somewhere. You have to live on the property in order to rent out the ADU or the junior ADU. Period. I just think there's.
And not or, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, it, it's like transparency. It's like, tell me exactly what I need to do and how it's gonna come back and bite me on the rear end if I don't comply. I, I, I don't know who said what said. All I know is, you know, it's like going forward. Thank you.
Any, is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this item?
Oh, regarding specific appliances to buy, are we not, is the city or anybody now getting into that business? Of what oven I should buy, what heater I should buy, something? I mean, because you're looking at comparing this stove and that stove. I know he used one stove, you want to compare it to another stove. If I want to get a Wolf oven and somebody wants a GE and it's two G's difference, that's my choice. But it's the question of, um, just using the right appliances. I realize hot water is really expensive, electric hot water. Maybe we go to electric heat, maybe that's cheaper. Maybe we do incremental changing over. And then eventually, but the, have to choose which oven we're taking is a little bit too much.
You make, you make good points, but your, your dispute is not with this commission, it's with the city council. They make the rules, we just try to apply them the best we can.
So I got a couple of questions, can I ask them?
Questions of whom?
The staff following this.
Let's make sure there's no more.
We're still in the public comment section of this hearing. Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this item? Sherry, is there anyone in the waiting room with hand raised?
No.
Okay. Then we're going to close the public comment portion of this hearing. Now, we're coming back to the commission for deliberation. And at this point, additional questions for staff, I think, are appropriate.
Okay, um, maybe I read this wrong, but, uh, of course, the exemptions that we're referring to here, this would be the only one we'd ever see at this point, because the new code eliminates exemptions and eliminates hardship. Is that correct?
Correct, there are new, yes.
Unless the code, unless the code changes again.
Unless the code changes. So under the exemptions here, cause I don't have the actual reach code in front of me, um, I'm reading on page two of seven, the following information the development director's supposed to look at. And I'm not seeing anything that refers to cost effectiveness among those items. I see.
The seven-page part is the admin report, it's not the code.
I know that, I don't have the code in front of me, but there, there seems to be describing what the code provides. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so it seems to be the, you got technical feasibility, that's not really an issue in this case. Lack of commercial available materials, I'm not sure that is an issue.
Don't think so.
Unconstitutional taking, uh, zoning, historic preservation. So that seems like the only one, and I don't have the actual code language, maybe would be helpful, says, the only one I see, will not enable the applicant to rent or sell the building at a reasonable rate of return. Is that the, is there some other?
Yeah, in the, in the paragraph above, the code also allows a community development director to grant an exception to an applicant if circumstances exist that make it a hardship or infeasible to meet the requirements of this article.
I see that, but it's, below is the criteria for hardship.
Correct, so that's where I think that we.
Are there, I'm, I don't know, I'm asking, not you, I'm asking our, our legal counsel, our staff. Is there some other hardship? Maybe we need to, before we bring this back next time, actually see the code, so.
See, here's, here's the situation. So you have an applicant, now an appellant, that's making an argument. And we're re, reviewing that information subjectively. And this really is a subjective matter, not objective, right? So that's, that's really what we're looking at here. We're not steering the ship here, we're simply reviewing the information. Commissioner Starkweather, to your point, I think you're trying to steer the information versus review the information at hand.
There is no objective standard then.
No, it's, it's, this is 100% subjective. You could literally submit anything and make an argument for any of these points. What he's done is he's made an argument for one of these points through his information. This came forward to this body in November of last year. You continued it date uncertain, right? Hold on.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to finish the thought here. And he then went back to the drawing board. You gave him, you gave him life, you gave him a second chance. He's come back with new information, subjective information. Now we vetted it, we said, okay, so mind you, we could have just as easily taken that raw data and brought it forward and this, this is what you have. We tried to vet it to try, try to show a discrepancy between the two pieces, good or bad. Indifferent as far as we're reviewing it, right? In terms of staff reviewing it. And we brought that forward again as a subjective piece. To your point, you're steering it more than you are looking at the subjective pieces, Commissioner, um, Starkweather. I just want to make sure that we clarify that. That it's less about steering it and more about reviewing the appeal documentation that we have before us. Now, granted, there are, there is some information that he's claiming he's unaware of. In talking with my staff, I know we make everybody aware of junior ADUs. Now, he may have been unaware of the way in which it was described to him, but we are very clear about the junior ADU piece because that's been in the books since 2021. And we've already had many conversations with legal on that. So going back to the drawing board, that's something he's got to think about. Because if he's wanting to rent all three and that's his, that's, that is within his, not right to do, but certainly he's within his right to rent two of those three through a deed restriction, but not all three.
And that's the state law.
So anyway, I, I just wanted to make sure that we, we clarify that. Not necessarily steering the subjective piece, but reviewing the information that's come before us.
So we have a standard that we don't define what hardship means, we just determine it based on our subjective view, whether that's a hardship or not.
Correct.
So why do we have this not enable applicant to rent or sell? That's just one standard?
It's one standard if he can somehow provide evidence.
So did these come from the code or are you just? Okay.
Yeah, the previous code before it was revised.
Including, but not, whether the technical language is.
I think it's, no, I think it's important to note that you don't get to switch to a different exemption and say, well, I want to make the argument for this, this new exemption. Realize that my determination for denial was based on one specific exemption, not all of the exemptions that we're seeing here as a matter of right, one. And he appealed that, and that's been brought before this body. And it was brought before in November, and he's brought new information that this body has been reviewing for tonight.
And that exemption was that it was cost prohibitive?
Cost prohibitive, yes.
And you're, challenged that with your own, or our building inspector challenged that?
Yeah, as, as the director, I still do not see the evidence necessary.
I see, okay. And the building inspector's letter here.
Regardless of the junior ADU, ADU, main residence discrepancy he's claiming.
Yeah.
I still don't see that. Period.
Can I add one thing? Just one thing that seems not to be mentioned. It's state law that needs to be kept cost effective. It's not in the, it's not in the codes, but it's state law, that's one of the, that's one of the state laws, if you have a reach code.
If you don't speak into the microphone, it won't be on the record.
There you go. Thanks, Sherry.
That is state law that it needs to be cost effective. It's not something that is subjective, or it's not something that, that I'm making up, or it's not something that, it's state law, they're right here, what, what, the, the, the four things that need to be followed in order to enforce the reach code and.
To create a reach code or to enforce it?
Create it.
Okay. But that's a determination that city council made already. You might disagree with it.
Yeah, but with solar. And the only way they were able to do that is with solar. And, and, and I don't have solar. Yeah, reach codes must be at least as stringent as statewide code, that's one of them, and a, a reach code must be cost effective, a reach code must be approved by the California Energy Commission, a reach code must be re-approved each energy code update with like every three or four years, it has to be reexamined and re-approved. But one of them is the cost effectiveness, and that's what I, that's what I'm asking. It's not, it's, I mean, it's never, it's not mentioned, you know, it's never mentioned that, for some reason, they don't want to put it in the report. But I mean, you can, I mean, that would be a good question for the attorney, am I imagining things or not? I mean, it needs, it, it, it needs to be cost effective in order to be lawful. And that's the only way they, that they, that they passed the reach code is because they, all of a sudden, all new homes were required to have solar. But not all new homes need to have to require solar.
You're speaking about the reach code versus the exemption?
I'm speaking about, I'm speaking about both. I'm speaking about the.
We're talking about the exemption, not reach code.
Yeah, the reach code was already decided.
That's already decided on.
Not us.
So that points mute.
Well, okay, so, but, but the exempt, the exemption would be that I, they didn't think about this when they passed it. They didn't say, they didn't say, well, unless, they, they put the exemptions and the exceptions in for, for things that might come up that they didn't think about. And, and one of the things they didn't think about, well, what about the people that can't have solar? You know, what do you do about them? So that's what, that's what one of the exemption would be. I mean, I mean, I, I would be considered to be.
Okay, we.
I mean.
Thank you.
That's, that, I just wanted to clarify, because you know, you keep reading on this list as if that's the only thing that, that, that they can consider.
No, it says in determining whether the exemption applies, the community development director may consider the following information.
May.
But may also consider other information.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. And then, and the, and the other thing that I keep pushing forward is that, that reach codes need to be cost effective, and that's what I'm applying for, the cost effectiveness of the reach code since I don't have solar.
Thank you.
So it's, you know, and I keep going off on the thing about cost, you know, payment, back payment over time, you can rent the house for whatever you want. It doesn't apply here. None of that stuff applies here. It's only one specific thing that applies, and that's cost effectiveness. Something that they didn't think about when they passed the, when they passed the reach code is what about the people that don't have solar? Now, all of a sudden, it's against state law. But not on the books, not on the books, it's already been passed, so it doesn't matter what you, it's just because it's been passed doesn't mean that you don't have to enforce it. You know, I think, I mean, doesn't that make sense? I mean, if, 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 if it's, you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying? If, if it's not cost effective, then it's against state law, is what I'm saying.
So here's, here's the exemption that you applied for specifically, just so that everybody's clear. Exemption to section nine dash 1.1009 subset B of the Ohio Minnesota Code is for hardship or infeasibility exemption for all-electric new construction in a low-rise residential building. Period. Not, not in terms of whether or not the reach code is per state law. That's not on the, on the table here. That's not what we've been discussing. That's not, hold on, I'm still talking. That's not something that we have identified through the appeal process, that's not something we've discussed at any point in time. We're looking simply at that one sentence that I just, that I just identified, and it's the same conversation we had in November. He's provided new information. It's subjective, it's before this body for review as a part of the appeal process. Staff, and I feel like this is deja vu, I, I feel like I said something very similar to this in November. Staff, given the new information that you provided, still does not believe that there is a justification for the hardship you're identifying. Period.
Even if you consider.
Period.
Even if you consider.
Period.
Okay, let's.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you.
All right, we'll reclose the public comment portion. What's, what's the sense of the commission? What do we do at this point? I hope everyone understands that it is not in our purview to override what the city council has deemed legal, much less state law. So we have to work within those strictures unless there's a very good reason not to, and that, like you have admitted about this other decision, is a very subjective standard.
And the burden is on the applicant to show that.
There's a hardship.
There's a hardship. Not on the city to prove that there isn't.
Proving a negative is.
Kind of hard to do.
Usually impossible.
And, and this is just a clarifying question for staff. In, in doing the analysis where we're looking at the fixtures.
We weren't recommending any sort of fixtures, correct?
Yeah, we were not steering the ship in any way.
We're just looking for like-for-like comparison.
Consistency between the two, yes. Apples to apples is really what we're looking for, yes. Right. We're not saying use this model and compare this model, we're saying, okay.
Or this brand or that brand.
Precisely.
Or this size or that size.
Precisely.
Okay. Any final thoughts, Matt?
No, I think that, I guess we could vote on the hardship tonight, but I would prefer to give the applicant a continued continuance so that he can go ahead and decide what he wants to do with this situation.
I, I would agree. I think that we, I think if we make a decision on this, it could be invalid at the end of the day. So I don't, I think, yeah, moving this to a date uncertain would make the most sense. I mean, I think that just in all fairness to the applicant.
Shouldn't we have a time limit on, on a continuance?
Why?
I don't know, it's just.
I don't.
To a certain degree, I would, I would agree with a time limit at this point.
No time limit?
I, the, look, usually I'm arguing the opposite, but knowing that we've spent seven months working with him at this point to get to here and now potentially another continuance, I would put it, I would put a hard date on it at this point and.
What, what do you think would be reasonable?
I would say somewhere between 60 and 90 days and, and be done with it.
I'll move that we continue it for 90 days.
I'll second that.
Now, 90 days being, this, this being the first meeting in June, 90 days is code for the first meeting in September? Not literally 90 calendar days?
Yeah, you could put, you could put a, a condition specifically identifying either the first or second meeting, yeah.
I think it would be safer.
Second meeting in September?
Friendly amendment to say.
I like that.
To say a particular meeting rather than a particular number of days.
You wanted to do it the second meeting in September? Is that okay?
Do you accept a friendly amendment?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Is there a second of that?
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay. Any discussion?
To clarify, it could be before or on, right?
Yeah.
So if they.
That's a deadline, that's a.
No, no later than the second planning commission meeting in September of 2023. Okay? Sherry, let's have a roll call.
Coolsey?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Let's try to work it out.
Yeah. Let's get clarity.
And the issue of, since the first time I noticed it, I don't know how we make it clear to everybody that if you have a junior ADU, you have to live there, but we should make that very clear. Maybe you did, but I. Okay.
And we've only had a few applicants, correct?
Wouldn't it be a bad idea to have it in writing?
I, I think it is.
Not only are we making it very clear, but we've had a couple of interested parties that have walked away from junior ADUs, knowing that that restriction's in place. That's why there could very well be a, a number of them that would be interested in doing it. However, knowing that they have that restriction in place, changes the game.
I, I'd like to suggest that if there, that wherever this restriction occurs in state law, that we make a reference to it in the code, amend the code to say, there is this rule that if you have a junior ADU, you have to live there. Or is that in, is that in the municipal code already?
Thought it was, let me look it real quick.
We just put it in our code, we just voted for it.
Well, it's not, it should be there already.
That is a code, isn't it? Isn't that what we?
Had some amendments about height and.
We had, yeah, I don't recall that being one of the changes in item one, no.
Uh, there's a red thing next to it.
Yeah, if you guys go to page 10 of Exhibit A to Attachment A, you'll see that it is.
Page 10.
It is in red, so yes.
Page 10.
That was a change.
Yeah. Page 10 of Exhibit A to Attachment A.
B2 there, that's a change. We added it because of the state law, we didn't, we were applying it because the state law existed.
Wait, wait a minute.
But now we put it into the code.
Wait a minute. I'm looking at a restriction on the size and attributes of the junior accessory dwelling unit that conforms with this section.
It's in the top paragraph.
10 of 12, top paragraph, very first paragraph, B2, BB.
Page 12?
Page 10.
Page 10.
Top paragraph.
Thank you very much. That's in black, so it's been in the code for a while.
It's just the numbering system.
No, the red, I was just told that was new.
Yeah, I have mine showing here in the red that I'm seeing here.
The, the whole line is red or just the, the paragraph red?
All, all I have in my, in my version here is the paragraph numbering is in red.
Yeah.
Not the provision of the paragraph.
So what paragraph are you looking at so I can, I can point you?
Top B.
First paragraph of, on page 10.
I have a question mark next to it.
So go down to the second, third, under D, I'm sorry, under E. You see E?
Yeah.
Letter I.
Yeah, I, I see that.
Covers it there.
But you also have the owner must reside in the single-family residence, that's B2.
Yeah, that's the restrictive thing that applies about.
That's black letter as opposed to red letter.
Correct.
And the red letter is not effective until the city council approves it. But the black letter is already in the code.
Correct.
Yeah, so we already said you had to reside.
Yep.
Good enough.
Thank you.
Already in the code.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to item three, future agenda items.
Thank you. Okay, so.
If you're having as much fun as the rest of us.
Appeals are never fun, but they are a part of the job. So design review permit for June 20, 21st, we do have one item that's, that's already gone out for public noticing as a part of the requirements, and that's for the design review, review permit, DRP 22-016. It's a new single-family residence on a vacant lot within the Persimmon Hill located at 380 Longhorn, and it includes a two-story ADU on site. It's a brand-new construction, the reason why it's coming before this body is twofold, one is a two, two-story construction, and they're doing work on a slope greater than 15%. So both of those provisions trigger coming before this body. That's all I'm going to say about them.
Just a clarifying question about the code itself. Does it matter if, if part of the lot is greater than 15% slope and part of the parcel is not greater than 15%? Does any part of the parcel having a slope greater than 15% supersede anything that goes on, on any part of the parcel?
It's the work being done in that area. So for instance.
So it's, it's where the construction is proposed?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, because you, you could very well have terrain that's flat on a, on a piece of property. The area here that they're doing work is greater than 15%, that's what triggers it. Beyond that, they're already doing a two-story ADU, so it would come before this body either way.
We get all the two stories though.
Yep.
Can we ask a question, Steph?
Sure.
As long as it's not deliberation.
It's not deliberation. I'm sorry if anything I've said tonight has slipped into deliberation. At the wrong, at the wrong, at the wrong time.
Well, I try to keep everyone in line, including myself.
I, I know you do, and I'm very sorry for my mistakes. I don't, you know, I am familiar in general terms with Persimmon Hill, but I'm not specifically. Are there any two-story houses in Persimmon Hill?
Yes. I encourage, while you're not going to necessarily see all of the residents, because they are larger lots, I encourage you to drive Persimmon Hill during the day, not at night.
Oh, I've done it, I've, I just can't remember, so.
I've been to about three.
Well, and with every project, you're always encouraged to drive the site and then observe the site. And I will say, when you, when you go to the site, you will see that there is, it's referred to as a story construction where they have actual two-by-fours showing the height of where the structures will be located at on the site. So you're going to see that. We've asked for that to remain, that's actually not a requirement for our code, it's actually a requirement per the HOA as a part of the board.
Oh, okay.
You learn something new every day. Uh, we are, we have already talked about canceling the July 5th meeting, and that is confirmed, we're showing it canceled, unless there's something that comes up, which I do not anticipate. Um, the 19th, there is nothing that's on the docket yet, but I anticipate there will be one.
Lot of pending items.
I anticipate one of those two are items will be slipping into the 19th, so expect a meeting on the 19th.
Okay, good, because I delayed my vacation, so the 22nd, the next day.
To the 20th, okay.
20th, I'm leaving, yeah, for Europe the next day.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions about future agenda items?
Uh, okay, no.
Do I directors report anything else?
What about public comments? Can people comment on, on those? Do we take public comments on future items? Do we take public comments on future items?
Yeah, does anyone here present wish to talk about future agenda items? Sherry, do you have anyone with a hand raised?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Uh, directors report anything else you want to add?
Well, I have, I was going to add something, but I, it's not my information to provide, so I'm going to have Alex actually say something.
Oh, terrific.
So unfortunately, uh, tonight is my last, uh.
Alex, no.
I would have brought the wine and the champagne and the cookies, you should have told us.
Yes, unfortunately, yes, I, uh, I, I took a position with, um, uh, City of Malibu to be an assistant planner.
Where?
City of Malibu.
Malibu, oh. They just opened up the beach in Malibu, I just saw.
I'm sure I'll jump into that.
For the first time.
They have some of the same issues we have.
Direct access to the beaches, sir.
Well, I hope you're happy there.
Uh, yes, uh, it, I think it'll be good. It'll be a good, uh, experience, but obviously wanted to, uh, express my sincere gratitude to you all for, um, for welcoming me, um, as a, as a planner here and of course, um, to Lucas and, and the rest of the staff for, for being exceptional, um, uh, guardians of the city. Um, and you guys have a great, uh, team here that works very hard to, uh, to make sure that the integrity of Ojai is, uh, is, is kept up to date. But, uh, just wanted to say, uh, thank you very much for, yeah, allowing me to, uh, to, to join the team and to work with you all. It's been, uh, it's been a great pleasure. So hopefully I don't lose contact with any of you and, uh, I'll give my email afterwards if.
Can you get us some parking permits down there?
No comment, sir.
Well, I will say this, it is sad to see him go, but, um, it's been a pleasure working with him. I think he's been great.
And I for one, I, I appreciate your diligence and your thoroughness and all of the reports that you've provided. That a lot of it, it's been very, I loved the coloring. It was very clear when you did the coloring, so thank you for that.
Well, and, and I'd like to add my thanks to Alex because over the period of the better part of a year, he and I worked on title ten, chapter two.
Nice.
Updates to the zoning and planning code. And it was painful. But he is thorough.
Yes, sure.
He is as knowledgeable as he needs to be and if he isn't at, at this exact moment, he will be ten minutes from now. And I appreciated that and, and, um, there were some things that, that Lucas and I had laid out in a previous run at some of this stuff. And Alex convinced me that we should go a different direction based on citations of state law or whatever.
Nice.
And I respect him immensely for doing that. So thank you very much. Thank you for your work.
Round of applause, round of applause.
Okay, uh, any commission member reports? I think we have one. We have, uh, some talk about the housing committee.
The housing committee has, um, combined with the Ojai Valley Democratic Club to sponsor a forum this Sunday. Uh, we have a really, I think, exciting lineup of speakers on homelessness, uh, looking at most, mostly different, uh, housing options for homeless, either preventing homelessness or transition, uh, housing or permanent. And so we have Jane Walter and Whitney Nunez from Help of Ojai who do, um, rental and community assistance to try to prevent homelessness here in Ojai. Uh, we have Dan Parzel from the new, um, Mesa Development. That's going to be a transitional, uh, housing for, um, foster youth. And then we have two people from Dignity Moves, which is a, uh, a housing group that, that puts in kind of housing villages on empty land, if land's available. They've already actually looked at some here in Ojai. Um, and they can do that in six months and it's kind of a transition. They usually lease it for like up to five years. And I've had.
They lease what for five years?
They lease the, the land to put this, this housing complex. So they're, they're modular houses.
Temporary housing.
Yes, it's temporary transient sort of housing.
It might go away after.
It might go away or it might be moved.
Yeah, okay.
Um, anyway, that's one program and I've talked to three other groups. Obviously Cabrillo has a homeless project in Miramonte, which we'd like to have them speak on at some point. That's in addition to the one they're requesting with us here on Bryant Street. Then we have, um, God, I forgot the name of that group. It's called, um, anyway, there's another group that in, in Ventura County, something Turns or something like that. I can't remember. I've talked to them that they, they do transient housing, they do permanent housing, they do services. And then we have the housing.
Worker Housing?
Um, well, that's Cabrillo's proposing, but, uh, and then there's also the, um, housing assistance, Housing Authority, which has section eight and we have, uh.
Runs Whispering Oaks.
Yes, and that's one of the issues we have so many questions about by people, not, not understanding how all that works. So eventually I'd like to get those three groups into maybe a separate forum. But anyway, this is going to be educational. People can ask questions and, uh, you know, brainstorm about solutions.
Will any of these people be in a position to comment on? Or do you plan at some other date, uh, having someone who is in a position to comment on the development down on the avenue with three hundred plus apartments?
Down on what avenue in Ventura? I don't know.
I'm not sure if it's in, inside the Ventura city limits or if it is in unincorporated county.
These groups have any relationship to that.
Okay. Well, you may want to consider another meeting.
Yeah.
Because that's the biggest thing I've heard about lately.
Uh-huh.
The last number I heard was three hundred and twenty-eight separate apartments.
Would be thinking about something like that for Ojai, but anyway.
And it's, no, I don't think that will happen in Ojai. I'm not sure that any of, what any of these people do winds up in Ojai. It may or may not, I don't know.
Help of Ojai is already in Ojai, providing services.
I think it would be.
Dan Parzel is going to be in Ojai.
Service to the community if people understood better what Help of Ojai does.
Yes, that's part of what we want to talk about. And each of these groups have different perspectives based on the type of, of housing and services they provide. So part of it is going to ask them to give sort of their view of what they see as the homeless problem, what's causing it and how their programs. Pardon?
Not yet.
Not yet.
So another meeting and maybe that's an opportunity.
Yeah.
If you can find out about this other thing. You've got Miramonte in here, is that, is that?
That, that would be another meeting.
Is that?
The, the Miramonte one is, is, um, that's their project that.
There.
That's a, Cabrillo's project.
Oh, that's Cabrillo.
Yes, that's not, that's not in this session.
Okay, okay, just trying to understand what, what the meeting's going to cover.
Yeah. Well, we're going to.
A question.
Talk about, you know, dealing with homelessness in general.
Right.
You know, what, you know, what the issues are, what the issues are here at Ojai, so forth. But, uh, these are three groups of experts who are dealing with different aspects of it.
Great.
So question, is this, um, exclusively talking about the city of Ojai or the?
No, no, this is the whole Ojai Valley.
The whole Ojai Valley, so the county as well. So if these people could elaborate on projects they might be associated with within the county, that would be great too.
Yes, definitely. Yes, definitely, because, uh, I know that Dignity Moves has programs in the county.
Know about it.
And I know Ventura's got another affordable housing, um, proposal of seven stories down on Thompson.
Yeah, I, I don't know that, who's doing that?
It's been on paper.
Yeah, I don't know who's doing that.
I think KB Holmes has got another three hundred and some unit planned for Thompson. I'm sorry, not Thompson, C word, off a C word.
Yeah, it's, it's right next to the railroad tracks, between the railroad tracks and one-on-one.
Yeah, the lemon plant.
This is part of our effort to explore, you know, what the problem is, what, how, what different resources are available.
And, and what's going on to try to solve the problem.
Yeah, I guess my question was just if they could focus at countywide, that would be helpful. Because they're looking at the valley too, right? They're looking at not just Ojai City.
Okay, any other commissioners with reports? How about our city council liaison?
Well, um, I just have one thing to report and that is, uh, that pertains to, to all of you. And that is that the council is, um, had a discussion last meeting about changing the makeup of commissions and, um, looking at also the selection process. And, um, and so it was, uh, we voted that, uh, moving forward, the, um, you know, we're having staff prepare, uh, you know, a, uh, we have another reading of the, of the, um, of the report. But, uh, we voted to have the commissions be in a commission, in a commission of five, uh, to have three be, or four rather be within the city and one being out of the city. So we, we changed that. Um, and, uh, we also, for the, for the commissions of seven, there would be two being out of the city limits and then four or five rather being in the city limits. So that was one of the big changes that we had made.
I, I watched the discussion. Was that the first reading of an ordinance?
Uh, yes, it was.
No, there wasn't an ordinance.
There was none, it was a, it was the.
I thought it, I thought it was direction to staff to come back with an ordinance.
Exactly, that's what I.
So there's still two readings to be done.
Yes, exactly, I'm sorry, that's what I meant to, to communicate.
I think that's what she was going for, yes.
Yeah, that's what I was meaning to say, yeah.
Are you planning to grandfather people who are currently serving? Or is this simply going forward with new appointments?
This, this is all up for discussion. So we did not, uh, make any decisions about existing commissioners. Um, and, you know, one of the proposals that I made was that it would, that we would start, uh, this with the next round, with the next council that's elected in. So, um, so this is, this is all for, up for discussion still.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, and I would be happy to, to talk with anybody, um, about this. I'm, I'm actually, uh, I've met with a couple of other commissioners to get some feedback about their ideas about this as well. So, um, so yeah, I've heard, I've heard from, um, you know, just different perspectives on this topic.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And there being no obvious other business before the commission at eight twenty-three, we're adjourned. Thank you all.